Did you use a mic or was that your own voice?
Yes.
Did you use a mic or was that your own voice?
My.
Wow.
Thank you.
There is a lot of difference. Yeah.
I think it's been a while.
Don't tell Mark what we're doing makes me happy. What's your trigger? It's good. It's good to be back, though. You know, everything builds when you get back. I had so many patients behind on billing. But it was great when we were on the Mission Point, Mission Peninsula. You know, in a cherry field. You know, we rented a house and we could walk to Lake Mission. It was really good.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was really nice.
How long were you there?
Six days.
Grandkids there?
Well, that, yeah. Just the grandkids. My son and his wife and the grandkids.
Yeah.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 25th, 2024. If you would please stand for our invocation and our Fledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day in Berry County. We thank you for your blessings and protection over everyone in the county as the storms go through. We ask that you keep our vision good, that we can continue to work for all of our constituents and continue to bless people in this county. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Present.
Carlton.
Present.
Getty.
Here.
Smelker.
Present.
Hatfield.
Here.
Tunisen.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials, are there any state or county officials here this morning that would like to address the board?
Good morning. Hot off the presses is the amended solar ordinance that I'm going to distribute to you. This is the amendment that we will publish, and we will have our public hearing for this ordinance on July 22nd. Any comments or adjustments that you or anybody needs to make will be part of that public process. That will eventually come back to you after the public hearing is held at the planning commission level. So, we took the suggestions that you had, we passed it on to our attorney, and he made the corrections that we requested. So, we'll get these distributed and plan on July 22nd.
Okay. Will there be a copy of that that can be emailed out or printed copies?
Yeah, we will email out. Once Julie prepares the notice, it'll go out as a full notice to all jurisdictions.
Okay. And that will be next week?
Correct. We have to get everything to the paper by Monday.
Everything to the paper by Monday. Okay. If you have an electronic version, just let us know.
We do.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you, Jim. Jim and I sat down last week, went over the ordinance in fine detail with some of the comments that we received and your input and input from the public. So, we feel we have a solid ordinance. Again, it is not a CRO, but it takes us where we want to be. We made some adjustments to the size of the property for the smaller projects as well. So, I think the minimum is now going to be 80 acres unless you are in a commercial district, which is where you want these located. Then it'll back, then you can go as small as 20. So, there's a few tweaks in it, but I think you'll like it when you read through it, but we look forward to your comments and your input. So, thank you. No other state or county officials? Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Hello, Gary White, Nashville. I've attended in the last year 13 different townships, the city of Hastings now, and at least one or more of the villages. It gives me, the three I did not attend was Assyria, Berry, and Irving townships. I've went around talking about the different things and needs, I think, for the county or what's going on. Here lately, it's been the COA building that I've been talking about, along with the budget, the tech, the property tax revenues for this year, next year, and the year after, and the approval from 2022 to 2024. What I'm going to do on today is talk about need and needy. Need is based because it is essential, needy lacking necessities of life. Your Assyria director back, well, if you, when she did her presentation about the millage, talked about 27% of Berry County being in the 60 and above. I took 63,000 Berry County residents, 27% comes out to about 17,010 residents that are 60 and above, which would qualify for COA services or things. Then, as I've been listening to the presentations throughout, I'm just sitting there, the five year millage is going to cost the taxpayers, I think, a minimum of $7.6 million. If the COA had 5% of that 17,000 population of 60 and above, it'd be about 850 people, which would be about $8,941 of taxpayer portion of the COA that would be going. If they made it to 4%, or made it to 4%, it'd be 680 people at about $11,000 per person that are participating in the COA. If it's only 3%, it'd be $14,901. When you folks went and did this millage, had you really went and said, "Show me the business case for wanting the higher rate," I think that is huge. You know, I said, "As people are finding it harder to live nowadays, food, taxes, and everything else, and transportation," this is where people are not understanding why and how. I'm running out of time, but so it just sits there. Are you really doing the business of the people in general when you start looking at these numbers? Because of what took place, I'll come back later because my time's expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning, Joel Witsen, Rutland Township. My wife is a rail letter carrier, and on her route, she has a number of shut-ins that she deals with, works with, and some of them have become good friends of hers. These people have no interaction with the outside world if it wasn't for their mail carrier or Meals on Wheels. And years ago, I thought it was a pipe dream to think that the COA could be annexed to the manor in some meaningful fashion, and now you guys have the ability to do that with a kitchen, with no millage, and be able to have Meals on Wheels with food that actually might taste good. They trust me, they enjoy the food regardless, but I think this is an amazing opportunity, and I want to thank the board for doing that because if it wasn't for those two services, and in all reality, the mail carriers aren't required to do that. They do it anyway. You can ask John Smelker, he was a mail carrier back in his day. So, this is great. I enjoy it, and the board doing this and making this a reality. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Moore, Community Affairs Manager for Consumers Energy. First of all, just want to say congratulations for having an ordinance in place to release to the public. I know it's been a long time coming. But also want to recognize, and since I haven't read the draft, we'll be taking a look at that later today, the community needs to understand you made a choice. This is not a CRO, as you said, Mr. Chairman. You've taken some extra steps to protect Berry County that are not in state law, so this is not an ordinance that would be compliant with state law, which we think is the right approach. So, you've taken on some additional responsibility, and the public should know that. And I think it's commendable, but it's a risk. There's no question about that. But I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and we're looking forward to working with you on it. But I slept this morning because I want to give you a real-time update on the storm situation. As I was coming up here, it was raining cats and dogs, and so it's a bad one that's crossed the entire state. Currently, we have 133,000, almost 134,000 people across the state who are without power. That's ticked up 5,000 in the last 10 minutes. Fortunately, in Berry County, even though we have about, as of five minutes ago, it was 13.5% without power in a large line of stretches from just south of Hastings to the county line in the south, almost just directly down 37. That's dropped a percent in the last 10 minutes, so that's good. I passed seven of our crews on the way up this morning. But I do want to caution people, as we always do with that down power lines, the winds are extreme, and that's what's causing it out of these areas. Kent County and Muskegon County were devastated again this morning. We expect another amount of storms to come through later this afternoon and this evening, so it's, we're not done for sure, but we will get as many power people restored over the next four or five hours as we possibly can, and then brace for the next wave to come through. So, modesty and water out there on the side roads as I was coming up. So, be cautious of that in addition to the power lines. Also, in Berry County, if you're going to stand up any type of a cooling shelter, please let me know. I'll be on the phone with emergency management, of course, the sheriff's office, but if there's anything that happens, we'll help to staff and to support that however we can. So, just please reach out, and if anybody has any concerns or if there's any customers who are with medical equipment or anything like that, please let me know, or please call into our dispatch center so we can get those folks on. They're always prioritized, and we'll make sure they get taken care of because it still is pretty hot out there. So, with that, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. I'm one of your customers without power this morning, so you know. But we made it. Additional public comment? Hearing nine. Approval of written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request. Does any Commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request. The agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents, does any Commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? No correspondence. Consent agenda, Commissioner Doster.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the following items on the consent agenda. A, approval of the June 11th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting minutes. B, approval to adopt the standard form of agreement between Frederick Construction Incorporated and Berry County for construction management services for the new Berry County Commission on Aging facility. C, approval of a professional service agreement between Berry County and the Berry Conservation District to conduct a spongy moth egg mass survey between October 1st of 2024 through October 31st of 2024 in the amount of $15,000 with the funds to come from the general budget, general fund.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Doster, supported by Hatfield, for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed, and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have two this morning. First, we're going to do some employee service awards, and then we'll have Lauren Chatterton with Gaybridge Company to go over the audit.
Do we have Melinda Backus and Aaron Valkenburg with us this morning? No? Okay. Not here. Melinda and Eric will get their awards momentarily. From Central Dispatch, Jennifer Gibson, Megan Green, Michelle James, if you could please come up, and Stephanie, if you would like to come up also. Good morning. Who wants to be Megan? I was going to say, I saw two hands. Megan, congratulations on five years of service. You are appreciated. Thank you very much. Michelle James? Excuse me. Michelle, 25 years of service. That is fantastic. And I don't think that's Roberta Kraus. Jennifer Gibson. Maybe she got stuck on one of these. There it is. Jennifer Gibson for five years of service. Thank you, Jennifer. It sounds like you guys had an interesting morning so far. All your fun, your fan club calling in, everybody letting on us, take care. But we appreciate you coming onto the team for Berry County and service for five years, and certainly 25 years is monumental. To do the same thing for 25 years and have that kind of dedication and passion to work with it, that is awesome. So, Stephanie, would you like to add anything?
I could say a thousand words, and it would never be enough. I am proud and honored to lead a team of overachievers and high achievers. 25 years, Michelle was actually my very first trainer, so she and I have been doing this together for a very long time. Think about doing it without her, it's a little bit sad, but she's going to stick around for a little bit longer. Like I said, I could say a thousand words about her, and it would never be enough. She laid the foundation for me to learn how to dispatch. These two bright young ladies, Jennifer, I begged to come to work at Central Dispatch for about five years. She was previously a cadet with the Sheriff's Office, and then Megan Hughes was right out of college, and so a lot of talent and a lot of experience between these three ladies, and I appreciate that they are the type of individuals that are willing to leave the comfort of their homes and families and to serve our community in times of need. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, Roberta Kraus.
Is Roberta here this morning?
I'm sitting here.
I do not see Roberta Kraus. I will just say that I have needed to use, work with Roberta Kraus on a couple occasions, and she is extremely efficient and extremely good at her job. When I need questions answered for things that are out of my pay grade, she has always been there and been a fantastic addition to that office. So, we will catch up with Roberta again. Specialty Courts, is Brenda Morgan here? And Michelle Wildrayer?
Wheeler.
Wheeler, okay. Brenda Morgan? 15 years.
15.
A fantastic career. We certainly appreciate your time and effort. That's been an interesting position of hers, so it continues to be.
Yes, it has.
It continues to be. And Michelle, 25 years, and you don't look a day older, so it's fantastic.
Oops.
Thank you, Michelle. We appreciate your service on that as well. If you would like to add something.
Brendan and Michelle not only show up to do a job, but they care about their job, they care about their participants, they go above and beyond. They run treatment groups, they find community service work, they're looking for resources constantly, and they give their participants every opportunity to make changes, preventing support and accountability in addition to that. They do a great job, and I'm super grateful for them, and I'm happy to have them on my team.
Well, we see your grants come through, and there are always 100-plus pages of detailed information. I don't know who's putting all the stuff together, but we appreciate everything you do. Appreciate everything you do to keep us safe and work with our community because you guys are on the front lines of that. So, thank you very much, especially 25 years. That's amazing. It's a great career, so you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hopefully she says, "Well, come on."
There you go.
Lastly, James Yager.
Come on down.
James.
20 years of service as the emergency management coordinator, so that is also...
Hootethaw.
Yeah, hootethaw. Such an outstanding career, especially in that field. You've seen a lot of changes through the county, you've seen a lot of growth, seen a lot of interesting things, and especially last year, when we talked about consumers and our gas lines and things like that. There's been a lot of fun things going on, but it continues to evolve and change, and we appreciate you being at the helm, keeping our county safe, keeping your eyes out, especially on a day like today. It probably didn't start out as we had hoped, but...
No, I had my fingers crossed. It's stated around us compared to some other counties, so we'll take it.
Amen. We will take the blessing, but James, we thank you for 20 years of service. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add?
This is the part that won my only employees campaign in my butt. No, thank you very much. I've had a pleasure, and it's been honestly some good times here doing this, and met some great people here and outside the county.
Absolutely.
So, looking at March of next year, I'll be passing the baton, so.
You're not going to make it to 25?
No, I don't think so. They raised the bar again, and I said, "I'm not sticking around." Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we will have Lauren Chatterton, CPA with Gaybridge Company, to go over the Berry County Annual Financial Report for the year and the 12/31/23.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I try to keep this as interesting as possible. I know this is the highlight of the meeting. I think they, yeah, they have the audit report up there. If you want to start just on page one, it's the independent auditors' report. We issued an unmodified opinion this year. That just means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. That's the highest opinion you can receive. On page six, starts the MDNA. Similar financial highlights, the assets and deferred outflows of resources of the county exceeded its liabilities and deferred inflows by $70,611,972, as reported as net position. That was an increase of about $9.3 million of that amount. $22,290,768 is unrestricted and may be used to meet the county's ongoing obligations. The county's governmental funds reported combining ending fund balance of $25,606,364. That was an increase of about $10.2 million in comparison to the prior year, and of that amount, about $2.2 million is available for spending at the county's discretion. The general fund was, the fund balance of the general fund was about $4.9 million, an increase of $405,049 in comparison to the prior year, and an unassigned portion in the general fund is $2.2 million, or approximately 7.7% of the general fund expenditures and transfers. And then the county's capital assets of accumulated depreciation was $49,629,943, which compares to $48,819,567 at the end of the prior year. And then long-term debt decreased by about $2.3 million during the year. On page nine, you'll see the comparative statement of net position. Some of the big things to highlight are the decrease in the pension-related deferred outflows. They decreased from almost $10 million to about $6.7 million because of amortization, significant changes in assumptions, and the difference between the projected and actual earnings during the year. Net pension liability also decreased for those same reasons. Unearned revenue decreased from $11.2 million to about $4.3 million. That was due to ARPA funds being recognized in the current year. And then cash and investments for the governmental activities increased by about $3.8 million, largely due to an increase in the governmental fund fund balance of $10.2 million, offset by the recognition of the ARPA funds of $6.9. And then on page 11, the comparative changes in net position. Capital grants and contributions increased by about $5.5 million, again, due to ARPA funds being recognized for expenditures in the year. Property taxes increased by about $1.6 million due to an increase in taxable values of the county. Investment income increased by $1.2 million due to greater cash investment balances, along with obviously better market performance during the year. On page 14, just want to highlight a couple of things about the budget. There were a few budget exceptions, most of them being trivial. Obviously, the larger one is going to be those transfers out. That is basically due to, you know, the year-end transfers that typically happen after we see the final results, how everything lays out, and any excess funds in the general fund get allocated to the different funds, so that's going to be the reason for that, larger variance with the transfers out. It's still less than 10% over budget, so it shouldn't warrant anything from the state, any issues there, but just wanted to note that. The county did implement GESB 96 this year, which is similar to the GESB 87 lease implementation that happened last year. There was one software lease that needed to be implemented, and you'll see that in the footnotes in the back that I'll go over briefly. All funds had a positive ending fund balance, which is obviously what we always want to see, so great job there. Page 55 just talks about...
Is Roberta here this morning?
I'm sitting here.
I do not see Roberta Kraus. I will just say that I have needed to use, work with Roberta Kraus on a couple of occasions, and she is extremely efficient and extremely good at her job. When I need questions answered for things that are out of my pay grade, she has always been there and been a fantastic addition to that office. So we will catch up with Roberta again. Specialty Courts, is Brenda Morgan here? And Michelle Wildrayer?
Wheeler.
Brenda Morgan? Fifteen years.
Fifteen.
A fantastic career. We certainly appreciate your time and effort. That's been an interesting position of hers.
Yes.
It continues to be. It continues to be. And Michelle? Twenty-five years. And you don't look a day older, so it's fantastic.
Oops.
Thank you, Michelle. We appreciate your service on that as well. If you would like to add something.
Brenda and Michelle not only show up to do a job, but they care about their job. They care about their participants. They go above and beyond. They run treatment groups. They find community service work. They're looking for resources constantly, and they give their participants every opportunity to make changes, preventing support and accountability in addition to that. They do a great job, and I'm super grateful for them, and I'm happy to have them on my team.
Well, we see your grants come through, and there are always 100-plus pages of detailed information. I don't know who's putting all the stuff together, but we appreciate everything you do. Appreciate everything you do to keep us safe and work with our community, because you guys are on the front lines of that. So thank you very much, especially 25 years. That's amazing. It's a great career, so you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hopefully she says, "Well, come on."
Lastly, James Yager. Come on down. Twenty years of service as the Emergency Management Coordinator, so that is also...
Hootethaw.
Yeah, hootethaw. Such an outstanding career, especially in that field. You've seen a lot of changes through the county. You've seen a lot of growth, seen a lot of interesting things, and especially last year, when we talked about consumers and our gas line and things like that. There's been a lot of fun things going on, but it continues to evolve and change, and we appreciate you being at the helm, keeping our county safe, keeping your eyes out, especially on a day like today. It probably didn't start out as we had hoped, but...
No, I had my fingers crossed. It's stated around us compared to some other counties, so we'll take it.
Amen. We will take the blessing. But, James, we thank you for 20 years of service. Keep up the good work. Anything else you'd like to add?
This is Department of One, my only employee's campaign in my butt. No, thank you very much. I've had a lot of pleasure, and it's been honestly some good times here doing this. I've met some great people here and outside the county.
Absolutely.
So, looking at March of next year, I'll be passing the baton, so...
You're not going to make it to 25?
No, I don't think so. They raised the bar again, and I said, "I'm not sticking around." Thank you again.
Next on our agenda, we will have Lauren Chatterton, CPA with Gamebridge Company, to go over the Berry County Annual Financial Report for the year ended 12/31/23.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Ellen.
We try to keep this as interesting as possible. I know this is the highlight of the meeting. I think they have the audit report up there. If you want to start just on page one, it's the Independent Auditor's Report. We issued an unmodified opinion this year. That just means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. That's the highest opinion you can receive. On page six, starts the MDNA. Similar financial highlights, the assets and deferred outflows of resources of the county exceeded its liabilities and deferred inflows by $70,611,972, as reported as net position. That was an increase of about $9.3 million of that amount. $22,290,768 is unrestricted and may be used to meet the county's ongoing obligations. The county's governmental funds reported combining ending fund balance of $25,606,364. That was an increase of about $10.2 million in comparison to the prior year. And of that amount, about $2.2 million is available for spending at the county's discretion. The general fund was... The fund balance of the general fund was about $4.9 million, an increase of $405,049 in comparison to the prior year. An unassigned portion in the general fund is $2.2 million, or approximately 7.7% of the general fund expenditures and transfers. And then the county's capital assets of accumulated depreciation was $49,629,943, which compares to $48,819,567 at the end of the prior year. And then long-term debt decreased by about $2.3 million during the year. On page nine, you'll see the comparative statement of net position. Some of the big things to highlight are the decrease in the pension-related deferred outflows. They decreased from almost $10 million to about $6.7 million because of amortization, significant changes in assumptions, and the difference between the projected and actual earnings during the year. Net pension liability also decreased for those same reasons. Unearned revenue decreased from $11.2 million to about $4.3 million. That was due to ARPA funds being recognized in the current year. And then cash and investments for the governmental activities increased by about $3.8 million, largely due to an increase in the governmental fund fund balance of $10.2 million, offset by the recognition of the ARPA funds of $6.9. And then on page 11, the comparative changes in net position. Capital grants and contributions increased by about $5.5 million, again due to ARPA funds being recognized for expenditures in the year. Property taxes increased by about $1.6 due to an increase in taxable values of the county. Investment income increased by $1.2 million due to greater cash investment balances, along with obviously better market performance during the year. On page 14, just want to highlight a couple of things about the budget. There were a few budget exceptions, most of them being trivial. Obviously, the larger one is going to be those transfers out. That is basically due to, you know, the year-end transfers that typically happen after we see the final results, how everything lays out, and any excess funds in the general fund get allocated to the different funds. So that's going to be the reason for that, larger variance with the transfers out. It's still less than 10% over budget, so it shouldn't warrant anything from the state, any issues there, but just wanted to note that. The county did implement GASB 96 this year, which is similar to the GASB 87 lease implementation that happened last year. There was one software lease that needed to be implemented. You'll see that in the footnotes in the back that I'll go over briefly. All funds had a positive ending fund balance, which is obviously what we always want to see, so great job there. Page 55 just talks about the lease liabilities and the spittle liabilities, so that's GASB 87 and GASB 96. Like I mentioned, GASB 87 was implemented last year for the leases. You know, you have the airport leases, and then the central dispatch has a few leases. And again, only one software agreement was implemented this year for the register of deeds software. And you'll be able to see that in... It's reflected in the fixed assets as well as the debt schedules that are on page 56. And that is pretty much all I have for you guys. Are there any questions?
I think, as we've looked over this and reviewed it, that all looks like good news. That it's a clean, unmodified opinion, that I need to say thank you for the detailed report, but certainly thank you to Michael Brown and Lulela and their staff, and literally the culture that's been created where we continue to push these positive numbers in there, especially it's nice to see the reduction in long-term liability like that. So there's some very good things happening in there. Fantastic auditor report. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Colton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's been some discussion on how Berry County budgets in terms of operationally. As you said, money goes into the general fund budget, then excess then is placed into some special funds, vehicle maintenance fund, building maintenance fund, data. And is this at all unusual? Is this something unique to Berry County, or is this a general practice of how counties handle?
I mean, every county is a little bit different. Every county operates a little bit differently. Berry County is the only place that I've seen this practice, but that's not to say that it's unusual or, you know, not allowable. It's all just dependent on how the county wants to operate and how they want to fund those special funds.
So it makes sense to me that operationally, you know, the payroll, he, such like that, that be in the general fund. But other counties may have these special funds, like the vehicle maintenance fund and such. Is that in their budgeting pushed into the general fund? Is that how they do it?
Again, it kind of depends. We see all different variations of how counties budget. You know, sometimes they'll just put in upfront in the budget that, hey, we're going to budget, you know, $500,000 for transfers to these funds. Berry County just does it a little bit differently, where depending on the performance of the general fund, any excess is transferred to those funds. But yeah, it's all just kind of dependent on how the county operates.
But your opinion, your opinion is we run a pretty good county here?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Doster?
No questions.
Commissioner Getty?
No.
Commissioner Smelker?
I see on the... Towards the back, the last two pages, on the... I believe it's for the federal grants and stuff, that that was also unmodified and...
Yes, I meant to go through that. Yep. Yep. No internal control findings, no compliance findings either, so all clean.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hatfield?
No questions.
Commissioner Tunison?
No questions.
Fantastic. Well, once again, we appreciate your presentation and your information covering that with us. Very detailed report, great reading, so...
Yeah, if we need something to help you fall asleep at night, that's it.
There you go. But definitely, again, congratulations to Michael and Lulela and the team here at the county for the culture and the attention to detail, because driving debt down and revenues up is a good thing. So it looks like everything is great. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Do we typically move to accept the audit?
I think it's in here somewhere.
Oh, is it? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, public hearings. We have items for consideration. Commissioner Hatfield?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of claims in the amount of $117,342.48.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty for approval of claims in the amount of $117,342.48. Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Item B, in answer to the question that was just asked, I move approval of the Berry County Annual Financial Report for the year ended 12/31/23.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for approval of the Berry County Annual Financial Report for the year ended 12/31/23. Discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Item number C, and I should note that item C, D, and E all come to you as a recommendation from the Personnel Committee. Specifically, I move to the approval to appoint Brenda Schenbarger Howe to serve on the Berry County Community Mental Health Board for a partial term that began on April 1st, 2024, and expires on March 31st, 2027. I should note that she was the only applicant that we had for that appointment, but most importantly, she is an extremely well-qualified individual with a background in mental health. And so I think we should consider ourselves very fortunate.
I concur with that. She did a good interview, has a long history of working in community mental health with people as a psychologist, or she's got a background in that as well, so... But great candidate, we're lucky to have her. Anything you want to add, Commissioner Getty?
No, I can't imagine a more qualified candidate than we had.
Questions from commissioners?
Was there a support? I didn't notice.
Not yet.
Okay. I'd support that.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Doster for approval to appoint Brenda Schenbarger Howe to serve at the Berry County Community Mental Health Board for a partial term that began on April 1st, 2024, and expires March 31st, 2027. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Item D, I move approval of the attached equalization technician job description and reclassification to grade level five on the BCC EA pay scale.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty for approval of the attached equalization technician job description and reclassification to grade five on the BCC EA pay scale. We went over this last. Michelle, if you want to address this, you can as well. So this went through the classification study or the classification group with Michael that reviewed this and made the recommendation that the Personnel Committee approve this as well. So, but if you'd like to give the other commissioners a quick overview of this, that'd be fantastic.
Sure. So primarily, this came about because we were reviewing the job descriptions, and in my opinion, the job description was previously overlooked. We basically had to rewrite the job description to match what our current equalization technician was doing. And then the committee took a look at it, and the grade level was recommended to be a five. So the position of equalization technician is not unusual. A lot of counties have that, and they do exactly what this person is doing. So the job description matches, and it's also very similar to other counties.
And I believe, if I remember right, the increase for the year was...
$826.
$826, so this is not a major...
Very minimal, and it is currently in our budget. So it's... We're not seeking other funds. And Lulela did an exceptional job explaining to you that the reason that the increase in cost was so low is because there's not pension costs associated. That's correct. So again, very minimal, and already a part of our budget.
Questions from commissioners? Okay.
I would just like to note, the committee had a fairly extended discussion about the reclassifications. This one, I think, is particularly well-supported, but we have seen a increasing number of reclassifications coming. And in discussion with Michael, I think he also acknowledges that in... We're seeing, because it's been a while since we've done the compensation survey, that we're seeing increased pressure to change job classifications as an alternative way to increase an individual's compensation. And that we need to be very mindful of that and consider carefully to what degree we want to continue that practice as opposed to dealing with compensation issues in conjunction with either contract renewals and/or preparation of annual budgets. So the committee will be having more discussion about that as we move forward.
And I think one of the important points that you guys discussed, too, is how job descriptions change, and it's been 10 years or over 10 years since the last time the classification study was done, so...
We're getting close. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Michelle.
Item E, I move approval to authorize the Director of Information Technology to conduct a job search for the position of Deputy IT/GIS Director, which should grant Department Head Grade 14, and the flexibility to deviate from current policies regarding entrance, salary rate, and vacation leave if needed.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker for approval to authorize the Director of Information Technology to conduct a job search for the position of Deputy IT/GIS Director, Department Head Grade 14, and the flexibility to deviate from current policies regarding entrance, salary rate, and vacation leave if needed.
This is a position that was put in place a number of years ago and is not currently filled. We were looking at bringing someone in at a lower position, a lower pay rate, but realizing that the job requirements were such that this classification and pay rate was more appropriate. This really gives us a backup to the director inasmuch as IT, particularly IT security, is a 24/7/365 proposition. It's imperative that we have multiple folks in the department that are capable of managing those needs.
I think that they had this position when it, at the other level, was reclassified, but they've had a few people come and go in that, and we need somebody to back up Matt, who is in fact a Deputy IT/GIS Director. So we thought that was a very good idea, and I think that was recommended by Michael and crew also. So I don't... There's any... Matt is here, if you have any questions for him as well on this?
Good afternoon, or morning, Detective? Yeah, we spoke to the Personnel Committee about the situation there, and we're looking for an additional individual who can basically be available after hours, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have issues that pertain to the Sheriff's Office or Central Dispatch, and all of them require someone to resolve them after hours. Right now, it's myself, so if I'm unavailable for any reason, or out of the county on business or personal travel, it becomes a challenge to handle some of those things. That network administrator position doesn't have any of those duties and the responsibilities. So back in 2022, I believe it was October, the board approved the creation of the Deputy Director position, and that was filled. And at some point in early 2023, that person resigned their duties, and when a decision was made to hire again, they hired at that lower network administrator position. And what we've discovered is that a lot of the duties of the position are very well detailed in the network... Or, excuse me, the Deputy Director job description, not as clear and not as well detailed out in the network administrator position. We found we have the need for those duties in that secondary position. So we would prefer to seek somebody out with the experience and the qualifications to carry out those duties on behalf of the county.
Additional questions?
Well, it only makes sense that we need somebody as qualified as Matt when he's not available, so...
Okay. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Tunison?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators, report.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Chairpersons, report. We'll have the Governance Board meeting tomorrow for economic development, so... And hopefully, it'll be a dryer day. Vice Chairpersons, report.
I was in Grand Rapids yesterday for the Workforce Development Board meeting. They continue to see increasing utilization of their services, and it looks like there are going to be some more grant funds available that will help them assist employees, potential employees, in locating positions and the training necessary to fill those. The... As Jim McManus indicated, the planning commission meeting last night was canceled because we did not have the completed latest draft of the solar ordinance, which you all received this morning. So that discussion will be next month at our meeting. And I was at the City Commission meeting last night. They filled the one open vacancy on the council, and no other unusual activity.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Airport tomorrow night. The townships won't start till next month, so...
Yep. Commissioner Smelker?
Had transit Monday morning. Everything went well there. We were fully staffed with drivers, and they had 911 yesterday afternoon, and we are talking there of our military, and we are having some difficulty with the VHF system in the southern part of the county, and that's being worked on.
Thank you. Commissioner Getty?
I don't have anything. I have Village of Menaval tonight, so...
Okay. Commissioner Colton?
For seniors, when I say seniors, I mean seasoned citizens and not high school seniors. Mooville, they're having... The Commission on Aging is having an event at Mooville tomorrow from 1:00 to 2:30, complimentary scoop of ice cream. They have big scoops there, for seniors and their grandchildren and great-grandchildren, if you're so lucky. So come down to the Commission... Or, not to the Commission on Aging, but to Mooville tomorrow at 1:00 to 2:30 for that Commission on Aging Ice Cream Social.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Doster?
I'd just like to thank the Personnel and Human Service Committee. I think that the, you know, a number of the items generated on our agenda were from there, and I think that you do good footwork on that, and it saves this board a significant amount of time. We get to experience it for a second time by reading your minutes, which are always available, and then discussing it here. I think it's a very good process, and I support us continuing in that, this manner.
Thank you. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Last week was the first.
There we go. Last week was the first time that the committee as a whole approved their minutes at a meeting. A few weeks back, a few meetings back of the board of commissioners, I brought that to you guys' attention. I actually brought that to people's attention a couple years ago. Sometimes you folks close your minds, close your ears because of the person that is talking, whether they have relevant information or not. I did talk to the officer that I talked, officer that I talked to, and they filed a complaint on it, who said it takes up too much of their time. Simple, let's see, simple research probably found that out, that you had been in violation and stuff, so, but at what point in time do you do it? So it's important that researching, even a small question, whether you like the person or not, is important. As I said, there's things that are, as I said, as I've been to 13 different townships and things, and I'm hearing different renditions of what the county commissioners say, and how they view what's being done in here or not being done in here. I think there is a communication, how do you want to say it, a lack of communication between commissioners for that, and I don't know how that gets solved. You know, just, you know, you can't say, well, thanks for the information, it's been great. Bruce isn't here today, but what I, he said, he asks me for information that I get, that I receive from the county because it is not going from board to board and things like that. Same thing with the Health Board. You know, you don't hear many reports on what's going on, and you're not asked, you're not asking that, so it's important to get that information. I'm still a big believer that the Health Department needs to be separated from Eaton County, 110,000 over there, 63,000 over here, approximately. And when you really sit there and you say, are we being, are we always the second to be asked for things? Just like in the survey that they did. I'm not even sure if the Berry County survey is going on yet or not. You know, then how do you get that information out there? I'm not sure how the senior facilities, the private senior facilities are going to deal with what's going on out there, or what your plan is. You said you want to do something to make sure they're not affected, but what's the process to get that information out to and to do for them? You know, make sure you're not running a government facility that's competing against them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Must be short and sweet. Very fast call to township. I'm presuming there's no more issues with the trail, if not, it'll come up in quite some time. So I'd like to know what the plan is, where we are, what the commissioners are going to do about the trail if we need to, okay? Secondly, when ARPA funds were distributed, the Activate Berry County received $100,000 for the development of a community food center. I think I just turned that off. Be with the progresses, so, thank you very much. Apologize for taking so much time.
Thank you. Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster?
I have nothing further.
Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty? Commissioner Smelker?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Nothing.
Commissioner Tunison?
I'm good today.
Okay. I have one thing. We have among us, this year's Thornapple Area Enrichment Foundation has named County Commissioner and Longtown Midville Community Volunteer Catherine Getty as its 2024 Hometown Hero. Very nice article in the Banner, Outstanding Individual Who Exemplifies Excellence, Integrity, and Commitment. That would certainly describe Catherine, and Catherine has been involved in her community and valued her projects throughout the past 25 years. The list is very long to go through and try to read all of this, but Catherine, that is a great distinguished award for you to be the Hometown Hero this year, and it's well-deserved after 25 years of exceptional work and commitment to your community. I mean, when I look at the boards that you've been involved in, and the things that you have done, and the work that you've done with parks, trails, in the Midleville area, the riverbank, it just goes on. So just wanted to say, congratulations to you that, I didn't see it mentioned, I saw it in the paper, and wanted to be sure you knew on behalf of your fellow commissioners how proud we are to work with you and your continued commitment to your community. So thank you very much.
Speech.
I will tell you, over the last couple of decades and more, none of that has seemed like work, because it has been just, just service to the community, and when you do that, it doesn't feel like a burden. And I would challenge everybody to look at serving your community in that way, and just finding, finding the next way to do good. And there's multiple ways you can do that, and if, and if you don't know, come ask me because I have lots of ideas.
Awesome. Well, once again, we appreciate your 25 years of dedication to your community, so that's all we have on today's agenda. We stand adjourned. Thank you for coming. Stay dry and stay.